Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to City Council for July 6, 2021. It's a beautiful evening here in Canyon City. We'll go ahead and start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
She is here.
She is here.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hakesh.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Here.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
And now may we all please raise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to the City Council that's on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to Councilmember announcements. Councilman Dennehy.
I just want to make the announcement that the Rec District is sending out one more questionnaire on the Rec Center, and everybody should be getting that, and after that, we're going to see where that goes with the Rec District.
Is it coming in the mail or electronically?
It's going to be coming in the mail. So if you get that, fill it out, and let's get that back in.
Good to know. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. So I wanted to just bring to light an email that I had gotten, we all had gotten it, but it deals with energy assistance funding, and it's from Black Hills Energy. It just says that there's some approximately $340,000, $340,000 for energy assistance funding by partnering with local nonprofit organizations, and our community is grouped in with that. So it's for residents and small business owners. All they have to do is contact Loaves &amp; Fishes for more information.
Awesome, thank you. Any other announcements from Council?
And we do have a general government meeting. That would be tomorrow at 5:00 PM here to talk about the compensation study results and implementation recommendation.
Excellent, thank you. But also, Rec Harmon would like to express a thank you to you and your team for putting on a wonderful Fourth of July celebration.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Do you want to make any comments about the event?
Sure. It was nice to see people out in Centennial Park, sitting, listening to music. It was our first attempt, I guess you could say, at an event. Didn't quite go as planned, but it was nice to see all the people out there. The bounce house was crazy busy, the cotton candy was crazy, going down fast. We ended up with one food vendor, one backed out prior to the event, and we let them know that they were going to be alone, bring extra food, and they did, and they were packed. They had a good night, but wonderful to see everybody out. It was a good crowd, fun crowd, and it was very just normal. It was nice to be back to normal.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
You're welcome. I'll give credit to Tom Dixon for that one.
Please do.
Well.
Let's go ahead and review the consent agenda and agenda. Ryan Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of Council. Item 6A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on June 21st and the Vision Committee meeting on June 23rd. 6B, staff's going to ask that you remove this item from the consent agenda, and we'll bring it back at another time. We did not receive assigned contracts for the Laserlight Show, and we did have some technical difficulties, so there's a few things we want to resolve from that. 6C, awards bid 3321, variable frequency drives and active harmonic filters to rec cell in an amount not to exceed $338,990.91. 6D is a monthly budget summary for April 21, and 6E is to receive and file a list of bills.
Any questions from Council? Councilmember Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, Ryan. Could you say again what happened with, what is it, item B?
Yeah, there were some technical difficulties during the Laserlight Show. It did not go as was planned or as expected, so we want to make sure that we resolve some of those issues before we approve any agreement.
And are we trying to get a refund?
We haven't paid him yet.
No, that's what I'm getting to.
We'll be discussing, you know, what happened and what that appropriate payment should be.
Okay.
Any further questions? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with an amendment to remove item B. Councilman Smith.
Madam Mayor and Council, I move to approve the consent agenda with removing item 6B.
A second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hakesh.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Hi.
Thank you, Council. Next is our Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for the Administrator's Report, some of the highlights in here, the industry market analysis that is continuing to move forward. The vendor is expected to be here the last week in August. Again, this is the project to look for new industries to bring to Canyon City that would provide primary jobs and where those opportunities lie. We have, you know, from a public works standpoint, we have different projects going on. Chip Seal is, that program is underway. We did have some water leaks over the last couple of weeks, and, you know, big shout out to the Water Department for, they were able to catch these leaks fairly quickly. One was a pretty substantial leak. They noticed it up at the plant before anybody called anything in and hopped on that fairly quickly, so very appreciative for the work that our treatment and distribution folks do. Mile High Youth Corps were in town, helping to maintain trails in town for a few weeks, and then we have several projects that are underway from a planning and zoning standpoint. Fire Station Number 3 is on track and in plan review right now, and happy to take any additional questions at this time.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. So when we're talking about in the planning and zoning area, we're talking about upcoming pre-application with several members of local churches that seek to add ADUs to their property to help homeless individuals. What churches are these, and how many, like, what are we talking about here?
You know, I don't know that we've had the meeting yet, so I don't know how many units, but there are minimum qualifications that they have to meet as far as the ADUs go, and, you know, that meeting's to help them get a better understanding of what that process is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, we're going to move on to a public hearing. Is this one, it's a first reading. Do I need to open up the public hearing for that? So I am going to open up the public hearing for item 8A. This is introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 15, Series of 2021, entitled "Ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Amending Section 17.24.050 of the Canyon City Municipal Code by the addition of a new subsection 103, allowing the construction of an accessory dwelling unit on the property located at 826 Griffin Avenue, also known as lots 14, 15, and 16, except 10 feet off the east side of said lot 16, Block 2, ferrier's addition to South Canyon Fremont County, Colorado." Turn the time over to you, Patrick Mulready.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, our public hearing this evening is a request for approval of a special review use to allow an accessory dwelling unit at 826 Griffin Avenue. The subject property is located mid-block in the 800 block of Griffin Avenue, adjacent to what appears to be an unused railroad right-of-way. It is owned R1 Low Density Residential, as is the entire neighborhood west of the railroad tracks. Lot in question is approximately 16,211 square feet in area, so it significantly exceeds the minimum lot size for the R1 zoning district. The existing home on site was built in 1898. The lot faces Griffin Avenue, but can be accessed via the alley to the rear. It should also be noted that the railroad corridor also provides pedestrian access to the property. In addition to the existing home, there is an accessory structure which has previously served as a carport. Accessory dwelling units are secondary dwelling units located on a property with a principal dwelling unit already on site. Canyon City has generally been accepting of ADUs, given that the city has a lack of quality attainable housing. In Canyon City's current zoning code, ADUs are processed as special review uses so as to ensure they do not impact the quality of life for surrounding properties in the neighborhood. The applicant is proposing to convert the old carport detached garage structure into the accessory dwelling unit on this site. That would give the ADU a front door out to the railroad right-of-way, which currently serves as pedestrian access, mid-block pedestrian access between this neighborhood and neighborhoods to the north and south. Now, as defined in Section 17.24.030B, special review uses are evaluated against six criteria, ranging from size and location to traffic generation and parking, to buffering, to the potential to generate nuisance conditions upon neighbors. Staff has evaluated this ADU proposal against those six criteria and found that the proposed ADU will be harmonious and in keeping with the residential nature of the subject property, and will not create land use conflicts for surrounding properties. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve an ADU at 826 Griffin Avenue with the adoption of Ordinance 15, Series of 2021, on first reading, and set second reading for July 19th, 2021. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Council may have. I don't know, I don't see the applicant here. I don't know if the applicant is present to speak on this application as well.
Any questions or comments from Council? Councilmember Schmisher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a few questions. With regard to the City Engineering Department's review, did we determine whether or not the access to the railroad right-of-way is legal?
So at the moment, it isn't a vehicular access to the railroad right-of-way. It's being used primarily for pedestrian purposes. So you have a front access to the front door on Griffin Avenue, but you also have a legal access via the alley to the rear of the lot.
Okay, so the pedestrian access through the railroad right-of-way is permissible?
Yes.
Okay. My second question was, I realize that it's a very basic floor plan, but it did denote a bedroom and a closet, but it didn't denote a bathroom? So I just wanted to ensure that it did meet the requirements of an ADU.
It will have to have a bathroom per the building code, per the IBC.
Okay, and that is their intention?
That is their intention, yes.
Okay, perfect. And then my third question was just on the bill for Ordinance Number 15. I think it is the sixth whereas. It notes that we had a duly noticed public hearing on June 7th and had findings related to that. I was wondering if you could just refresh our memory.
So the evening of the sixth, this was originally intended to come before Council, and you may recall, the applicant had invalidated their notice to go to that hearing because they had removed the sign that was posted in the front yard. So we had to move the public hearing to this evening. We can easily change that in the ordinance to read the night of July 6th, just to make sure that we note the date that the public hearing actually took place and bring that back at second hearing.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, Patrick. On the issue of the railroad right-of-way, does the, so, does, tell me a little bit more about how the resident would be using that, because there would be a front door. Would that be towards the railroad right-of-way?
So the way they have shown their ADU and the materials that were submitted to us, the front door would open out to the railroad right-of-way, and that could be used for pedestrian access. To the extent that there is vehicular access for this property, that would likely be coming from the alley to the south.
Okay. The, how much, how much, do we know where the railroad right-of-way runs?
So as far as we are aware, the right-of-way goes from fence to fence on either side of, and if you look at the map, you can see that there's the width of that right-of-way. Now, the question for us is, how actively is this railroad right-of-way still used? As near as we can tell, it isn't being used very often at all at the moment.
The, so, have we contacted the owners of the right-of-way?
We have not contacted the owners of the right-of-way.
Okay, I am concerned about that, because I know that railroad rights-of-way, even with rails removed, are not necessarily abandoned. But, but the, I know that Rock 'n Rail and the Arturist Train jointly own the rail lines that go out to the Parkdale Quarry Site through the Royal Gorge Canyon, down to some point, I'm not exactly sure where their ownership ends on the rail line, but they also own the spur that goes up to the old Cotter Facility, which this is an arm of, as I understand it. The, from fence line to fence line, I'm concerned that the, that the proposed use may not be harmonious with rail traffic. That's my concern. And the, I think that, I think it's incumbent on either the applicant or the city to contact the railroad and make sure that they're aware of this and have a chance to weigh in. The, I am pretty sure that railroads are usually fiercely protective of their rights-of-way and object strenuously to any encroachments. And so, and so that's basically my concern. I would hate to see us approve something that the railroad would contest. And, you know, I'm not sure it was your job to contact the railroad. I mean, it was noticed, public notice and all of that, but there's, it seems to me that we have the potential for some real fireworks here. And so, you know, based on that, I would, it would be my inclination to say that we should table this until the railroad has been contacted to make sure that they're not going to be asserting some right that would prevent use as envisioned in this plan.
So we could certainly do that. That is an option. Another option would be a condition of approval that would orient the front door into the backyard of the property so that it wouldn't go out to the right-of-way. That would be another option.
That would, that would be, that would be acceptable. I'm, you know, all in favor of, you know, flexibility to allow people to proceed, and I hate to, you know, be the one to kind of throw sand in the gears here to slow things down. But if that was, you know, acceptable to the applicant, I think that would be an appropriate condition, because, you know, having an access into, into an active rail line is, sounds like a recipe for problems.
Councilmember Dennehy.
You know, as I'm looking at this, and it's just a thought, and on this property, if it's fenced, and is that if they're facing the rail line, I believe that would be facing west. But that door, but if that door was within a fenced yard, coming out that front door toward the rail, if that's what they were looking at, John, would that be accessible if it was within a fenced area?
The, it's hard to tell looking at the photo.
That's what I'm saying, but if that area was fenced, so they could not get to the rail line, and I see what you're saying, but, I mean, if that would be a possibility as well.
Corey, do you have any recommendations?
Did they get noticed?
Well, they were, as a neighboring property owner, I believe they were sent a mailed notice.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. So, I mean, they should have received notice, not only with the sign, but they should have received direct notice as a property owner within the area. So in that respect, frankly, the city has done everything in terms of not only the sign, but actually the mailed notice.
Sure. The, and we do know the notice went to the railroad?
That was part of the mailing, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Any further discussion from Council?
The, I would, Madam Mayor, I would just say that, given that, if that is true, that the railroad did receive notice, and that they are not here and have not raised objections, that we can approve the proposal as submitted.
Would you like to make a motion out of that? Oh, well, I need to do public comment. Is there any public comment? Then I will close the public hearing and now ask for discussion, and then invite a motion. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve a bill for Ordinance 15, Series of 2021, on first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a vote. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Could I just make one amendment to that, revising the date in the bill so that it reflects when the public hearing was held?
So you'll need to make a motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion to approve Bill Ordinance Number 15, to amend, whereas a duly notice public hearing was conducted before City Council on strike June 7th and add July 6th, 2021.
So, if I may, I would just amend my motion to include those items that Councilmember Schmisher has...
Okay. So there's been a motion and a second to approve item number eight with the revision of the next public hearing on July 6, 2021. Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hakesh.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Hi.
Thank you, Council, and congratulations to the homeowner. Item number 9A. I see Tammy already coming up to the podium, getting ready for this one. This is the second reading and adoption by title only of Ordinance 18, Series of 2021, and this is about the municipal code concerning water shut-off and notice.
Before you this evening is Ordinance Number 18, Series of 2021, coming back for second reading. We did make changes as recommended by Council. You do have the redlined version as well. Staff just asks for the ordinance to be approved on second reading.
Are there any questions from Council? If not, I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 18, Series of 2021, on second reading.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? A call of vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hakesh.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher.
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember, oh, sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Hammack.
Hi.
Thank you, Council. Thank you for being here in person. Tammy, really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And we're now on item 9B, one that I am incredibly excited about, and that is for the Vitamin Cottage Natural Grocers Market. And this is BI to introduction and adoption by title only, Resolution 13, Series 2021, entitled "The Resolution Approving the Parking Easement Agreement Between the City and Vitamin Cottage Natural Good Markets Incorporated."
Rick's worked really hard on this, so I'm going to hand it over to Rick.
Sure.
Absolutely, Rick. I want to hear all about your hard work.
If I may, Natural Grocers has corrected me that it's natural food markets, not good markets. Just as a correction.
Remember that when you make the motion.
Natural food markets.
And it is correct on the parking easement and on the resolution. It's only incorrect on the agenda.
Yeah. We were contacted several months ago by the owner, the person that purchased the old Jewett's Building. He had it under contract at the time. His purchase was contingent on finding somebody to go in there. He contacted us to see what we wanted. He's a developer who likes to purchase property and lease it out. He's interested in purchasing other property in Canyon City and building and leasing to suit. So we were more than happy to talk to him, and we mentioned that we are very, very interested in attracting and natural grocers to the area, that we've been trying to do that for some time. And he said, "Well, it just so happens I've built for them." So he knows natural grocers. He approached them, and they expressed an interest in moving into that location. We got through, just about all the way through the process, and parking, of course, became an issue. Parking was an issue once before. It was discussed once before with this property, because the parking lot is not a large parking lot. And of course, parking spaces for retailers means revenue. If you can fill a parking space, you've got people in your store, they're buying product. So they wanted to maximize the amount of parking they could have. Natural grocers, excuse me, Jewett's had head-in parking on the street, and natural grocers wanted to guarantee that that would stay that way for years to come. We discussed it here, myself, the City Administrator, the Public Works Director, Planning Director, and City Attorney. We talked about this to determine whether we could. We entertained, and Natural Grocers entertained, a license agreement, which would be an auto-renewing annual agreement to use the head-in parking as it is, but we could not do a long-term agreement because it restricts any right-of-way access or any right-of-way improvements that may need to be made to 16th Street. So I'll give credit to our attorney, who came up with the idea of putting parallel parking in front and drafting a long-term easement on that property. Parallel parking will give us an opportunity, give them an opportunity to park in the front of the establishment, and they're going to move the door more to the northeast corner, so it won't be in the center of the building. But that will give them parking in the front, guarantee that they'll have parking in the front for a long time, and give the city some flexibility when right-of-way improvements need to be made. So in other words, now there'll be parallel parking along the road. If we need to expand the road, extend the road toward the building, there's still room to do that. Natural Grocers agree to it, and they are looking for other ways to add parking as well. So they're communicating with other local businesses in the area to see if they can expand parking through relationships. And we are here today to say that they've agreed to this, and hopefully, it's no guarantee that they're going to finalize this and close on the property just yet. But this is a very, very, very good step in that direction. So we would love if you could approve... So we would love if you could approve an easement agreement with Natural Grocers to allow them parallel parking in front of the building as long as they own the building and operate as Natural Grocers, I believe it is.
Yeah, and there's a couple contingencies, one that Rick just alluded to. One is it's contingent upon them purchasing the property, and the second one is it's contingent upon them occupying the building. So as long as they occupy the building, the easement is in place. If they cease operations, that easement goes away.
Thank you. Councilmember Reed?
Ryan just answered my question. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I would I would just like to make a comment that when I was running for this position a year and a half ago, I was sat with as many community leaders in Canyon City as possible, and I always asked everyone, what would they like to see improved in Canyon City? And almost every single one of them said they wanted a Natural Grocers. And in my recent Facebook Live with the mayor, I also interviewed a number of tech relocators that were professionals and asked them, what's the number one thing you'd like to see improved in Canyon City? And again, it was mentioned, we really need a natural food grocery store, and so we are finally, hopefully, fingers crossed, getting it. I mean, we've done our part to to make this deal happen, and we hope to see it come through and continue to be good partners, but that's a huge boon to the health of our community and local shopping opportunities.
Yeah, and I'm trying to work with them to find to establish more parking. There's a couple of directions that they're trying to go to do that, and we haven't been directly involved yet. I just made a connection, and hopefully, it'll all happen to our benefit and their benefit. But on a side note, we have, you know, we work with Buckston Company to do a lot of retail analytics, and they did an analysis of here compared to Salida. There's a Natural Grocers in Salida. And our match for Natural Grocers is much stronger than Salida's, and Salida's is doing pretty well, and Natural Grocers knows that. The the company is is they like the area. Ironically, their real estate guy has ties to Canyon City, he's very familiar with Canyon City. His aunt and uncle, I believe it was his aunt and uncle, had a business here. So he's very familiar with the with the area, and they genuinely want to be here, so let's let's make this happen, I guess, please.
Yeah.
But we still do need to work on more parking, you know? No matter what, that building will always have this problem, even if they decide they don't want it right now. We're always going to have a problem with the amount of parking in that building. So if they can make it work, great for us and great for them, and I'll do whatever I can to help them find more.
Well done, Rick Harmon.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
And everybody else involved.
Yeah, Ryan and Corey, I know you're an integral part of that negotiation as well, so thank thanks to, and also Kim was a part of that as well with designing the the parking options.
And I'd like to add, throwing a plug for this for city administration, everybody in this process wants this to happen. There was no there was no discussion like this can't happen. Everybody wanted this to happen. So as far as being a good customer service and good stewards for the community, it's it's been a great process, very good process. So hats off to city administration and all of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Corey?
Yeah, if I could add to what Rick said, the associate general counsel I've been dealing with at Natural Grocers, I think would want me to convey to you all that they have not that the city that Canyon City was incredibly responsive, and compared to other communities, much more responsive in order to get this on the agenda as quickly as we did get this resolved. What Rick said, if this doesn't happen, it was had nothing to do with the city, and Natural Food Market would tell you that we that city staff was incredibly responsive in addressing these issues.
And the owner of the building stated that to me as well. So it's, we're looking good, I guess, you know? On this project, anyway.
All right, well, let's let's make it official, then. We have Councilmember Brendan Smith.
Madam Mayor and council, I move to adopt by title only Resolution Thirteen, Series of Two Thousand Twenty One.
A second. There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. We also need to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a parking easement agreement. That's item number nine B two. Was it all together in one?
It's all together.
Okay, well, that wasn't on my script.
Tell the things, I want to make sure you're covered.
We are covered, which means we can move on to item ten. This is an executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B concerning options for providing electric power to the city. Before we adjourn to executive session, we do have a request to speak to council by Emily Tracy.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council. I wondered if you could add anything to what's printed on the agenda regarding this item and how it might connect with the work that the Energy Committee is working on now. Just wondered if you can say a little more about it.
I'll turn that over to our attorney.
What what the Open Records Act says, or I mean, sorry, Open Meetings Law says with regard to executive session is to give the topic only to the extent it wouldn't somehow jeopardize the nature of the discussion. To give additional detail at this point would jeopardize the nature of the discussion. Whatever is discussed, ultimately, if it is anything viable, would have to go through the Energy Committee. It's just too preliminary at this point.
Okay, so there's no further detail?
Not today.
Provide, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. I'd like to call for a motion to go into executive session. Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor and council, I move that the City Council enter into executive session for the following purpose: Executive session to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B concerning options for providing electric power to the city.
Second. There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Then we will call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakes?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council.[1769.15]